Want to open the meeting? If you can all stand for the fudge. And Daria, can you lead us?
Sure.
I congratulate you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Hearing of citizens, anybody would like to speak? Could speak for three minutes? Is there anybody who would like to speak? Sit down. Not seeing any, we'll move on. Mr. Palito, about EMTA.
Okay, well, just, I'd like to start out by saying that even though we are having some contract negotiation issues with EMTA, they have agreed to provide our transportation for the next school year. So I just want to reassure everybody that is continuing. Randy is actually working with their staff right now to finalize the routes, and we do anticipate having information to the parents here very shortly. But as you probably saw in the paper today, we do continue to have some issues with negotiations as far as the contract goes. And in front of your, at your desk here tonight, I did run through a couple of different scenarios just to give you an idea of where we're at. And this has actually changed since I printed this. I've heard secondhand that right now EMTA is agreeing to withdraw the aids on the buses, the demand for the aids, but I've only heard that secondhand and really have not received anything in writing on this. So just to go through these three different scenarios, the first column really shows you what we were anticipating paying EMTA for this upcoming school year. And our current contract with them is based on a number of bus passes issued. So we pay right now, or we did pay, $2.50 per student, per day for bus passes. And that's a rate that we agreed to a couple of years ago with the former EMTA director, and it's based on their lowest published fare rate. And it increases as their fare rate increases as well. So based on this, you can see that we were looking to, or anticipating an increase of about $56,000. We had a total cost for this year of $1.2 million. Last year, because the fare was $2.40 per hour, per student, it was $1,160,000. The proposal that I received this Monday from the new director included a, wanted to shift to an hourly rate. It also had a requirement in it that we have a bus aid on every bus, and if we did not provide that bus aid, that the hourly rate would effectively double. So this middle column here really shows what that looks like. So we have a proposal from them that they're estimating about 14,400 hours that they would be billing us for at $94 an hour, which would take the total cost for us paying EMTA to $1.3 million. If we were to use our Blue Coast to cover all the buses as far as the bus aid work, that would cost us an additional $216,000. The only issue there is it would be 23 bus aids. We have less than three weeks to hire those bus aids, and we really do not feel that we're going to be able to get that in place in time. And I really feel that it's highly unlikely overall that throughout the year, we will be able to maintain bus aids on every one of those buses because it's so difficult to fill those positions. So this is kind of the best-case scenario under the current contract proposal. The additional cost here, if you recall, back in June, we did purchase four more buses. It was our intention to take back six runs from EMTA. We were able to, based on some consolidation, we feel that it's probably going to be five additional drivers. So with that, the operating cost, and this is before the cost of the buses, is $168,000. So when you add those three sections up, you can see that on a regular recurring basis, this proposal would cost the district about $1.7 million, best-case scenario. And comparing that to the $1,160,000 that we paid last year, again, before the buses, that's a $580,000 increase. The four buses we purchased cost $325,000. So overall, when we look at our budget next year, this is an increase of $900,000. Now, the last column is what I think is the worst-case scenario under this contract, and that's if we're unable to provide any aids on the buses. I believe it will fall somewhere in between here, but I, again, I think we're going to have some issues filling all those buses with bus aids. So if this happens and we pay twice the hourly rate, the amount paid EMTA would be $2.7 million a year. We would still have our five routes at $168,000. So the total cost before the buses would be $2.9 million. So that would be an increase of $1.7 million. With the additional buses, it puts us just over $2 million. So that's where we are right now. Again, I've heard that they're dropping the demand for the aids, which would change this considerably, but at this point, I wanted to at least give you an idea of where we were at. I've asked for, over the last two weeks, additional information from EMTA to try to confirm these numbers. I've been unable to get that to this point. I did actually request that through a write-to-know last Friday, and they put a 30-day extension on it. Based on what they have provided me, I feel that probably their cost per hour is significantly less than the $94.03. And I truly believe that once we have that information, we'll be able to show that what they're charging us currently under the current contract at the per-bus-pass rate is enough to cover their costs. So at this point, we have no choice but to move ahead with EMTA, and we'll continue to negotiate with them. The county executive and the mayor did reach out to us today. They're involved, and they want to help us try to get this resolved as well.
Any questions?
I only have one question. Could you provide the board with a list of the names on the board of directors at the EMTA? Because, I mean, we're dealing with the administrator. I would like to see, I would like to know who is involved on the board.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Karen. Well, perhaps in this, did we have a contract going into this, or they are changing the language of the contract?
Yes.
Why can't we hold them to the language?
It's an annual contract.
And when is it up?
It's up. So it's renewed every year before the students typically?
It seems like to me, I mean, just in business, they just don't want our business.
I believe that's the case.
So you're going to make a pay heaven, but the business fine, then we're working.
I kind of put it like it's a contractor who looks at a job and really doesn't want to do the job, so they're going to charge you extreme, and if you do it, then it's worth their while.
Exactly.
Yeah. And this is the same guy that came to our meeting in June and said, "We're going to do it. We're going to help you out as much as we can."
And my big concern right now is that I really don't have enough information to let you know whether or not this is an accurate amount. And again, based on the information they've provided me, I'm pretty confident that the actual cost that they incur for these routes is covered by the $1.2 million that they had in the last contract.
Okay, we'll move on to strategic plan. Mr. Palito.
Right. Well, shifting to good news. We're in the process of implementing our strategic plan. And at your desk table tonight, I just want to point out, we did, and I think we shared this before, we have our implementation teams, and we have them organized by goals and pillars. Those teams have been meeting pretty frequently this summer, working to identify the key tasks that we are going to do for the upcoming school year. The goal teams have really selected their priorities for 18-19, and the implementation team overall, and the pillar teams are working to organize that and align it across the district. So at this point, we have about 90 tasks that we're looking to do to start to reach our goals for next year. And looking at, as we've worked through this over the last couple of weeks, we felt that the best way to share this out at a district-wide level is by pillar. So at your desk tonight, again, we have some documentation. Daria's going to review that a little bit, and then I'd also like the pillar leads to present an overview of what they're going to focus on for the 18-19 school year. So do you want to start, Daria?
Sure. So what you have in front of you tonight are two sheets of paper. I want to just give you a little bit of background. What we're trying to do with this first one that's in black and white, we want to create one document that's very clean and very clear, that we can give out to every staff member. So when we're on the first day of school or the first time we're with all of them, but then every parent, you know, every community member, everyone can be on the same page to know this is what the strategic plan is about, and this is what we need to be remembering. So something that everyone can hang in their office, put on their desk. So we've tried to distill it down. What you'll see across the top is that tagline that you all, you all particularly worked on with Mutu on the strategic plan. Then we have our logo, and then underneath are the five goals that we all agreed to as part of the strategic plan, those stakeholder-driven goals. So that's our thought with this document. The other one, which has a little more color on it, we would envision this being updated every year. And this includes our strategic priorities for 18-19, which each pillar leader will talk about in a minute. But our vision for this document would be, it has the, those targets, which are the really big game-changing targets, the numbers that stick in your face like 100% graduation rate. So that's in our face all the time, but yet at the bottom, we have these updated strategic priorities. So every year, we know as a district, this is what we're working on to get there. So I'm interested in any, you know, feedback or thoughts on these. Again, everybody would get these, so everybody's on the same page as we move forward.
All right. Do you want to continue on to pillar two?
My pillar, sure. So I am pillar B. I'm the leader of pillar B, which is defined as safe climate and strong relationships for students and families and community. This recognizes that schools can't do it alone. It's meant to emphasize school safety and collaboration with families and community in ways that are welcoming and respectful of diverse perspectives. On my pillar team, I have Mike Pisano, Rob Cosgrove, Carla Johnson, Gina Rulo, and Ken Nixon. They are each members of various goal teams. We meet together to talk about their goal team's tasks in light of that pillar, in light of that idea of relationships and safe climate. So we brought tasks together, we looked at them and compared them, and we've come up with three strategic priorities in that area. Those are clarifying our policy and practice around behavior expectations. So there's a lot of work to be done about what we expect of our students, how we communicate it, and then how we, how we hold them accountable for discipline. We want to, number two, enhance our student support services. That's a lot of work around our SAP process, clarifying it, making it consistent, making sure it's clear to our families and our staff. And then our last strategic priority is improving family engagement and communication. We do this, we know we can do it better, and so we have a lot of ideas as to how that would work. But those would be our three main areas of focus for this full year. Any questions for me or my pillar? Okay, thank you.
Karen Ryan is the principal of Piper Burley, and she's the lead on pillar one, which is equitable access to standards-aligned instruction.
So this pillar's responsibility is to ensure that instruction reflects students' prior knowledge, learning styles, cultural backgrounds, with standards at the center of curriculum planning, student learning, evidence, and student outcomes. My team members are Nora Dolak, Pam Mikowski, Donald Orlando, Jesse Williams, and Abby Matz. Our focus areas for this year are to improve district-wide use of district assessments, really making sure that we're consistent with the administration of the assessments, that we're utilizing that data to really drive our instruction intervention process forward. We really are going to work hard on creating a process for the adoption of standard-aligned materials with the influx of the budget. We are going to be looking at new literacy curriculum for this upcoming school year, so we want to make sure that we have a process that's tight for doing so. And lastly, enhance our process to accelerate learning. So we really want to make sure that there are interventions and supports in place for our students who are underperforming, and also that we're adding accelerated coursework in the middle and high schools.
Oh, number two again, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's create a process for the adoption of standards-aligned materials.
Thank you. Mr. Titus, there's a summary on this.
I knew that.
Don't think we pointed it out. And pillar C, Diane Sutton, Sutton is leading that. So Diane, can you talk about professional development?
For sure. So our focus is, as Mr. Palito just said, results-focused professional learning. And really, the emphasis in this pillar recognizes that we have a focus on people. And the people that we're focusing on are people inside the organization in this case, so a little bit different than Daria's pillar, where she's focusing on the community. But we're focusing on the people inside the organization, and specifically, the teachers and the administrators. Right, so we have three large goals. First, you can see in front of you, but my pillar teammates to name are Amy Coleman, Tim Sable, Jeff Hutchinson, Chandra Slocum, and Rick Schneider. And we have a lot of really important work to do, and we all do. Our tasks boil down to three buckets that include, first and foremost, examining our bias. And that's going to be, that is very important, and it's also going to be challenging because we need to examine our personal bias, and also I think we need to examine our organizational bias. And so that will be lively and important conversation. Our next big bucket is improving, continuously improving our teaching practices. So what are we doing to ensure that we are forever updating our practices? We've got a lot of good things going on, and so how do we continuously improve those practices and look forward to what's happening around the nation in research, and what's happening in our own classrooms that we can promote and continue to grow with? And third, enhancing our PLC and ILT times. And really, what that means is improving and enhancing the times that we have teachers coming together to talk about data, to look at their practices, and then to plan moving forward, what needs to change. So we, at the district level, and then at each of the building levels, need to ensure that we have that time built into the school day for the teachers, and that we're using that time as wisely as possible. Any questions for me about pillar C?
And Neil Brockman is pillar D, data-informed continuous improvement.
So I am the in-charge of pillar D. What this is basically looking at is managing the whole. So it, the, really, the guide behind it is to ensure that all aspects, and literally all aspects of our school system, are goal-aligned and moving together in an equitable, mission-focused mission, manner, excuse me. It promotes evidence-based decision-making, equitable allocation of resources, and effective, efficient operations. The team is made up of myself, Randy Praschnicky, Angie Knacki, Paulette Zagorski, Zagorsky, excuse me, Andrea Gloystain, and Jim Viera. We have two major buckets for this upcoming year. One is the implementation of the data summits, which are going to be occurring this year on a regular cycle, a six-to-12-week cycle, where it is an entire process, where teams, the teachers, the administrators, are going to look at both academic and behavioral data, really look at it through what are defined as the four lenses, and then dive into the root cause of maybe what is happening with the data, do some professional reading on how we can improve that, and then really make a game plan for what's going to happen in the next cycle. The other big bucket that we have is that we want to start evaluating our district-wide assessment systems. And that, when we say that, we're not necessarily just talking about the educational assessment systems. We're literally talking about everything. So how does HR function? How does transportation function? And so the idea is that if we're really making good decisions, we should have good data to back up why we made those decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Mr. Brockman.
Go ahead.
Mr., first, Mr. President.
Sorry.
Then, Mr. Brockman. Explain a little bit more on the implementation of the data. What data, more specific, are you examining? And how do you assess that in relation to where we are?
So one of the things that we want to make sure we're looking at is nothing that is subjective as far as the data is concerned. So we're going to be looking at the CDT data, the classroom diagnostic tool stuff. We'll look at PSSA. We can look at PVAS. We can look at SAT scores, PSAT scores. So we want to take things that are, have been norm reference, that doesn't really have any human implications to it, so that we can make true judgments on how the students are doing academically, so then we can really push forward and have a clear vision of, this is where our kids are. Let's do some discussion, some reading, some research about how to move them from point A to point B, and then we'll put a plan together. And then literally six weeks later, we can revisit to see, how did that plan work? Did we move the needle? Did any of our kids improve? Did they not improve? And we can go from there.
Are you looking at a baseline piece out that tells you where we're at, where we can go forward?
Yes. At this point, with, when they altered, at least as far as PSSA and Keystone's are concerned, with them changing the test three or four years ago, we've got enough data behind us to really say, you know what, these, this is really where our kids are. I mean, we can follow cohorts of students. If you're in the ninth grade now, we've got all of your data from when you were in middle school, so that we can really pinpoint where the students are, and then we can start having those conversations about, did they grow? How are all of our third graders doing, our fourth graders doing, over the course of years? So we can, we can start drilling down to, like I said, groups of students. We can drill it down to specific grade bands as far as how it's doing with the curriculum and the instruction. And that's just on the academic side. When it comes to the behavioral side, we have Infinite Campus that's been tracking behavior incidences for years. We can really start looking at where the trends are and kind of see where there's hot pockets of, you know what, this is something that is an issue for us in all of our schools. How do we overcome that? How do we change student behavior, et cetera?
Neil mentioned the CDTs. I think that's a good example, one that we're taking a look at. Nora Dolak is actually taking the lead on that this year. This past year, we started looking at that because that's, that's an assessment that we can give our students throughout the school year to see how close they are to becoming proficient on the PSSAs, really, PH is where they're at, and helps drive the instruction forward. But the reason we selected that product was because it was free. So that might not necessarily be the best thing that we need to analyze our data and drive our kids forward. So Nora has a committee that has been working on that and has several different options that we're going to consider, and our plan is to take those options to the first data summit, where we'll have all the principals and all the instructional leadership teams together and share out what we're looking at and have them make the decision. So that's, you know, I think one of the things that we're really looking to do here with this process is, just like Mutu brought in many voices to build our strategic plan, we want to do more shared leadership, where we're bringing more people in to help us make these decisions, so we make the right ones.
Is the board going to be invited to Procter?
Yes. So we also have the goal, the goal team leads here tonight. There, that's where really most of the work is happening in the strategic plan. Diane Sutton's in charge of goal one. Angie Knacki is goal two. Nora Dolak is goal three. Ken Nixon is goal four, and Neil is goal five. So the next step in this process, we really had to expedite things this summer because we wanted to get things moving. So Mutu recommended that we keep a small core for those goal teams so that we could get some type of implementation plan for 18-19 moving. The next step now is to start to expand those goal teams and bring community members and stakeholders in so that we have more of a diverse voice within that. So one of the things that I wanted to offer the board tonight, if you're interested in participating in the implementation, if you would like to participate on one of those goal teams, please let me know, and we'll get you in touch with the goal lead so that we can get a schedule out.
Mr. President?
Yes.
All I want to say about all that's going on here is what I really like, what I like, what I'm seeing is that one of the problems that the district has had for years, and it's just people, it's no, it's not placing blame on anybody or anything, it's just that every department, every school is its own kingdom. It's, and they, and they, they fight the administration, bringing things down to them, and then, and then it just becomes a us-against-them-type situation, where I think what's going on here, or what I see going on here, is that you're bringing people in to make them all feel a part of the administration, so that they're not combating each other or pointing fingers. That, that's what has to, that's what can improve the way the organization works, is it's not this pointing fingers because they're pointing at themselves now, they're a part of it. And so I just want to applaud you for moving in that direction.
Okay. All right, so, and have I missed anything so far?
No, you're on. You're right on.
So next steps, we're going to meet with the administrators next week at the administrative retreat. We're going to review our 18-19 priorities with them, and then we're going to start, our main focus, we're going to have all the buildings focus on goals three and four this upcoming year. So we're going to, going to do mini-data summits with them on goal three and four to give them example of how we, we expect those to be run. And then we're going to share out, talk to them about creating building-level plans, kind of like a mini-strategic plan. It might be a little more scaled back this year just because of the time constraints, but the goal here is to have them align their building goals up with our strategic plan, so everything is moving in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Palito with LURDA, which is on the back.
So, yeah, we, we were putting LURDA on the front burner. We were intending on doing that for the last two weeks, but kind of got a little distracted with some of our transportation issues. But I just wanted to report out that Mr. Petrungar, Mr. Zogby and I met with Senator Loughlin and Chris Groner, he's the director of economic development in the city, last week. They reported out that they're working with the developers and their partners to try to find a way to close our revenue gap. And I think at this point, they found about $60,000 a year, so that's, we still have a ways to go there, but that's a start. One of the things, as we discussed, the overall climate with the LURDA, the majority of the large developers right now, Mr. Groner pointed out, are getting a 90% LURDA because there is that job creation clause in the existing LURDA. So most of the major construction is getting a 90% at this point, and that's something that we did not factor into our calculation. So it's our intention to really take a look at that. We plan on meeting with PFM and going to the county assessment office and trying to take a look at that and seeing if that will impact our projections and change what the revenue gap is on the LURDA moving forward. So once we have that done, we're hoping to bring something to you with some updated data.
Any questions? Okay. Move on to investment update. David?
Thank you. So in front of you, you have a landscape sheet of an investment summary that you're going to see every month from here on out, now that we have money invested in other things besides just a normal cash account. So I wanted to go over with you, see if there's any changes that you want to it, but this is generally what we really see, being presented to the board every month to be a vote on it at first. So just sort of wanted to walk you through it at first. This first page is really a summary of all the activity that happened in our investment account throughout the entire month. The second page of the report is going to be a snapshot of what is in the investment account as of the last day of, as of the closing business there. So you go back to the first page, really what it's going to be showing here is the, the first two columns are going to show you the date and the type of transaction of what happened in there. The first column with numbers, and it really reflects the total amount of cash that we've taken out of the general fund account and put into the investment account to get some extra earnings on. So as you see, we really had two transfers, one on the 12th and one on the 19th, for a total of $13 million that we've taken out of cash and put into investments to get a better return on that. The columns over off to the right, we're under the larger heading, Investment Account Activity. This shows what happened within the investment account with that money. So on the 12th- either make the decision to reinvest it or move it into operations if we need that, if we need that money at all. So then the remaining $11,000 of that just went into the money market account, which is a fully liquid investment vehicle. It gives us less of a return than the treasury bills, but we have access to it whenever we need it. So then the, on the 19th, when that $5 million was transferred in, we put all of that into the money market account, that being that, knowing that on September 1st, we have some large debt payments to make, we might need some of that money or all of it to make that debt payment on September 1st, we wanted to keep it liquid for us. We'll need it depending on how much real estate taxes really come in before September 1st versus after. That's around when the real estate tax collections start picking up, and, you know, if we get a pickup in our taxes on, say, September 5th, that doesn't help us for our debt payment on September 1st. So we wanted to keep that available for us so we can access it regularly. One of the lines that you will see on here every month going forward is going to be the amount of interest earned. You don't see it on this one because on the money market account, interest is paid monthly at the beginning of the, of the following month for the previous month. So in the bottom right-hand corner there, you'll see a line for July accrued interest. That shows that we earned $4,000 in interest in the month of July. So mainly that was off of that $5 million being in there for a total of 11 days. So not a whole lot of interest, but we didn't have a lot of time to earn it either, since we transferred in on, on the 19th. The other reason being that you don't see interest on there or any earnings is because the, again, the securities that we have, we're only going to realize interest on these or earnings on them when they actually mature. So every three months, when we have a treasury bill maturity, you'll see some, you'll see earnings there. And if you go to the second page, it'll show you how we come up with that amount there. So again, this is the page that shows a snapshot of what we have invested as of the last day of the month. That first line on there for the securities, you'll see the, that is the money market fund, the $5,000, $11,000. That agrees to your first page there. Those next four lines are the laddered maturity of the treasury bills, where they mature every three months. So if you go down to the last line on there, where it says US Treasury Bills 10, 12, 17, due 10, 11, 18, that's the mature, the first maturity we're going to have in October, coming up here in a few months. You'll see in the middle column, where it says tax cost, we purchased that security for just over $2 million. When it matures on October 11th, we're going to get the dollar amount that's under units there of $2,010,000. So basically, we bought a security for $2 million. When that security matures in October, we're going to get $2,010,000. So $10,000 of earning on that one there. That's relatively small earnings. If you look at the, the middle line there, that's the one that's about a one-year security that we purchased. We purchased that one for $1,995, but we're going to get $2,400,000 when that matures. So $45,000 we're going to get when that matures, and that's because we put that into 12-month, a 12-month security. So if we do get a chance there, which I think we will be doing, is reinvesting that $2 million every time it matures. So when we get in that full cycle where we can purchase 12, 12-month investments, we'll be seeing, if nothing else changes, a $45,000 return every maturity that we would see then. So that's kind of how the earnings would show up in the future there as we get into, as we get into the 12-month securities. One more thing, if you go back to the first page, on the bottom there, there's a summary, the current value of, or the maturity value of the current holdings, it shows you $8.1 million. So everything that we own right now, if we let it mature, we'll get $8.1 million. And that shows since we spent $7,988 on them, we'll have about $111,000 earning. And that, so that earnings that we are going to get by just letting it mature, that doesn't include reinvesting anything, so that, that $111,000 is pretty much, that's just what's going to happen with our current investments, so we know we're going to be better than that by reinvesting any money there. It was pretty quick.
Just a quick question. You say September 1, we have a debt payment?
Yes.
What is that? Is that the one we leaned, or other than educational?
Yeah. All of, all of our debt payments are lined up, that we pay, we pay principal and interest on September 1st, and we pay only interest on March 1st. So all of the bonds that we have outstanding, we have two payments annually, principal and interest being in September 1st. So that's our larger cash outflow that we have to worry about. And it's really, it's a good timing for that, that's on September 1st, because that's when we're, have more cash because that's when real estate taxes are really coming in then.
How is that going to amortize, over five years, 10 years?
You mean the, the debt payments?
Principal and interest that's paying annually?
That's paid. So that's all set out in the, in the bond documents for the amortization schedule that we have. I could send you a summary that I have on those, but really I think in September, we're looking at about $8 million or so going out the door for, for our principal and interest. I think in March, we see about $3 million or so. That's your question?
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you, David.
All right.
Move on to building renovation update. Mr. Polito?
Well, I think they're moving along with our architects and their analysis of the buildings. They, you know, more and more, I'm thinking that, you know, last year, we did a lot of planning, and this year, we're really moving into implementation with the strategic plan, and we're also doing that with our building updates. The architects, to date, have been through seven of our buildings. They're scheduled to do five more next week. They've done assessments on three of the roofs, so they, we're hoping that they have their report done by October so that we can give you some options to consider as far as moving forward with some construction projects. It's my hope that we're going to be able to make a decision before the end of the school year so that we can start planning and not miss another construction season over next summer. We also met with PNC last week, and they had some very good news for us. Based on the market conditions right now, it looks like our, our swap, it would be favorable for us to get out of that. They do want to hold off on that until we decide what we're doing with the bond issue, with the new bond issue or refunding, because we would want to roll that in with that. But they did present us with a number of different options on, on the new bond, bond issue with the new money, and there's, there's more options there than I anticipated. So again, once we get the, the list from the architect, we're hoping to bring that to you, along with some different scenarios for you to consider as far as a bond issue for next year.
We waited a long time for that to turn.
Yes, swap.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Randy wants to do an update on the pilots.
Just, just a quick update on the pilot agreements that we've been pursuing over the last couple of months. If you remember, at the June meeting, we approved roughly 12 agreements with, with hands, pilot agreements. Those resulted in, I don't know if we ever went over a specific number, but those resulted in an additional $33,000, just over $33,000 in revenue, beginning the 18, 19 school year, and then the 19, 20 school year. And those properties will go fully taxable in the 20, 21 school year. So basically, you're going to double that to roughly $60,000. For the board, for the August board meeting, you'll notice there's seven more agreements, pilot agreements, for your approval at the meeting next week. Those cover eight different properties with different organizations that had properties that were tax exempt. Those agreed, pilot agreements began with the 19, 20 school year, and those are just under $61,000 of additional revenue. So beginning the 21, 22 school year, they become fully taxable, and then an additional roughly $121,000 of tax revenue coming in. There's still four organizations that we're working with. They had some questions. We're going back and forth about a couple items, so we hopefully will have more news by the next board meeting, or the September board meeting about those additional organizations.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may note, that we also identified four current pilot agreements that are in play that we will cancel in the 2020 and 2021 years, which will result in additional revenues to the school district.
All right. Thank you. Anything on new business? Do you need an executive session? Anybody have anything else they'd like to speak before we recess for about five, 10 minutes? Yes?
So I had a couple of parents just approached me to discuss the hoodie policy that we have going in place. A couple of them were just really concerned that it was a punitive state that would maybe affect the kids who, who did nothing wrong, that find hoodies, not just as a, as a form of like expression, but as, almost like as a security or as a comfort. Some of them suffering from various anxiety, depression, or gender or body dysphoria, and they just wanted to know that it may be the board, and then the district could possibly consider maybe not having it be a blanket policy that was issued out, but that maybe it would be targeted towards the areas where this was a bigger issue, and so that some of the kids who, who had used this to help them cope with their anxiety could maybe continue to use this as a place to cope as well.
We had a committee for that, didn't we, Doc?
Yes, it was an administrative committee that worked on it, and the basis for it was regarding safety. And students can wear the hoodies to school, and then while they're in school, not have them on. And then when they're, you know, outside or after school, they, they're permitted to take them. But it's basically during the school day when they're in class that they would not have the hoodies on. Did you want to speak to that?
What we've found during the disciplinary process is that many students prior to engaging in a violent altercation or a breach of our disciplinary policy would pull the hoodie up and sit it around their faces for the purpose of hiding from the cameras so we wouldn't know who it is that was breaking the school code, school provisions. And so it was determined that it'd just be a bell-to-bell policy. You come in with a hoodie, you put it in your locker, and then at the second bell, you can take it off, you know, or coatroom or wherever it is, and then at the end of the day, you can put it back on. But during the day, it was becoming a distraction. There are other issues associated with it in that we were having students that were wearing earphones, earbuds during the day that you couldn't see with the hoodies that were up, and possibly also the Bluetooth cell phones during the day while those were up as well. So it was determined that a blanket policy would be able to cover all those issues that just, you're not going to be able to wear them. Whereas previously, you were allowed to wear them, but you just couldn't have your hood up. That was found to be more of a distraction and more of a enforcement issue for the teachers, where it may or may not have been done, and so it'd just be easier if there'd be no hoodie wearing at all. But that was the intention behind why the policy is doing this. So these kids would still assume to be able to wear things like track jackets, regular sweatshirts, anything, it's just as long as it doesn't have the hood?
Correct. Crewnecks, quarter zips, they have a lot of those now. Those were more than, well, sweaters, whatever, but not the hoodie, which is what created the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. President? My only question is, so how is this going to be enforced?
If the kid comes in and he has a hoodie on and he refuses to take it off, we send him home? That's...
We would follow the, the policy. Our hope is that they do take it off, and then they work with the family to make sure that the families are aware of the policy so that they do understand it and so that the student can get a good education. Again, our goal is for them to be educated.
I mean, I just don't want the enforcement to become a bigger distraction than the reason we're doing it. You know, that's what can happen sometimes, you know, trying to get them to take it off, it takes up...
That's, I think, what I saw, and I'm sure he did up at Erie High, was that the enforcement of constantly asking the kids to drop the hood down became so much of a distraction that we felt that this would be a better approach.
They should have taken them down, we wouldn't have this problem.
Yes.
Just a question. Have we done due diligence in looking into the taxability of the facility that, I don't know who has owns it, if it's a diocese or cathedral prep, regarding the facility on 12th Street of Cherry? I understood that there were certain areas of it that were potentially leasable or on an hourly or daily basis. If that's the case, I question whether or not that property should be exempt from tax. And I don't know if we've looked into it as of yet, but I thought perhaps we may want to approach a pilot.
I think Mr. Wagner is writing that down.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Note has been taken.
You are a gentleman. Thank you.
Today.
Today.
All right. If nothing else, let's take a, take a recess and we'll meet back in ring three for executive session. That's our legal matter.